I'd like to call this meeting of the Shatteran City Council to order. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we know about what time they might be here?
I guess they were at Trump Butte.
Those horses coming through for the ride is at Trump Butte.
They were at Trump Butte at ten after five. You might be done, you might not, I don't know.
They're out here now?
No, at ten after five, they were at Trump Butte.
Oh, okay.
And really wet.
I'm really wet. Okay, you wanna go out and watch them? Is somebody gonna notify us?
I don't know.
What's this?
Rick.
Well, I'll ask. Okay, let me read this. As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two, subsection eight of the Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Opens Meeting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Before we have roll call, I'd like to thank the guests tonight. And the riders are coming from Crawford to be here. It'd be nice if we could go out and see them when they come through in the midst of our meeting. So if there's someone out there that could tell us when that happens, we would appreciate it.
Rick will see if he can.
Okay.
You might be done before they get here.
Could we have roll call, please?
George Klein?
Here.
Shane Shepherd?
Here.
Mark Graves?
Yes, I hear.
Kevin Alexi?
Here.
Clay Anderson?
Here.
Okay, could someone make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Clay to approve the agenda. If we have roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Mark to approve the consent agenda. It includes minutes from the May nineteenth council meeting. There is no correspondence. We did have, do have meeting minutes from the Business Improvement District Board meeting held May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And meeting minutes from the Problem Resolution Team meeting held May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. And I found both of those very interesting to read. Had special designated licenses that were administratively approved. Shatteran Chamber of Commerce Benz on Bordeaux held on one sixteen East First Street on July tenth, July seventeenth, July twenty-fourth, and August fourteenth. Bean Broker Coffee House and Pub Wedding Reception at the Shatteran Art Center on June seventh. Wild Bar and Grill Wedding Reception at the Shatteran Art Center on July twenty-sixth. And that is all. Anyone have any questions about any of those items? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item B on the agenda, would someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three and move for its approval.
Second.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Mark for resolution number twenty twenty-five dash forty-three is to allow the Chamber, Shatteran Chamber of Commerce to use Railroad Park for their twenty twenty-five Benz on Bordeaux concert series. Gabby, you wanna tell us all about it? Or you can delegate that.
Yeah, sure, no problem. We've been here before. This is our annual music concert series that we do for the community for free every summer. And we are doing the four concerts this year, avoiding that first one for Crawford's Fourth of July celebration. Of course, we have the county fair, or yes, the county, excuse, yeah, the county fair for the last week. So we're going to avoid conflicting with the rubber track race. So we'll have those four dates in session. We feel confident about how we've proceeded in the past and would like to proceed in that way forward. We've submitted all of our material to the State Liquor Commission and are waiting to kind of hear back from them if they need any more information. But everything should proceed as normal moving forward. If you have any questions too about the premise, the footprint, or anything, the venue, please let me know. Happy to answer any questions.
Can be laid out pretty much the same as every other year?
Yes, sir, everything will be laid out exactly the same, same footprint over at Railroad Park. We've, of course, applied for the double fencing waiver to hopefully eliminate having to put up those panels that take a very long time, a lot of manpower. But also too, it, it kind of creates a concern for our guests there because it's not very safe, especially when the wind blows. Like if, if a cattle panel were to potentially fall on a child or something that would detrimentally hurt them. So we want to move away from doing that and continuing to secure the premise the way that we have. The local PD here has given us consent that they also are in align with that as long as we secure the premises properly with an ample amount of security that's identified accordingly, which is easy for us to do. We've done that in the past years. In addition to that, local PD does take a swing through, I would say at least once or twice every single time. I mean, we're also catty-cornered to their location so they can very easily see the premise. But we do a really good job and our volunteers do a great job of securing the premise because ultimately we want to make sure that this continues to be an evolution of bands so we can renovate Railroad Park. So the security of that venue and the footprint is extremely important to us because if we don't secure that venue, we will be at liability for not having this in the future. And that detrimentally affects not only what we're trying to do to renovate the park, but it also takes away from the tax dollars that are spent in town, from the businesses that, you know, benefit from those people that are leaving the premise after, after those hours. So we want to make sure it's as secure and safe as possible regardless of the actual footprint and the, the required, I guess, parameters around that.
Sounds good.
Any other questions that I can answer?
No other questions, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to.
Thanks, Gabby.
Thanks, Gabby. Item number C on our agenda, someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, which is to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for law enforcement presence with the Board of Trustees of the Nebraska State College doing business at Shatteran State College. We have that in, in our information. Chief can give us a little background of the history of this and where we stand now.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Rick Hickstein, Shatteran Police Department, one twenty-five Main Street. We've been, had an interlocal agreement with the college since around two thousand nine, two thousand ten, where we used to give them what we call a college resource officer, CRO. That position would be dedicated straight to the college and they would reimburse us a certain percentage of the wage back. Over the evolution of this, two years ago, Dr. Patterson and I met and Austin Stevens and I met and we developed a plan to provide services but not dedicate one officer to it due to staffing levels at the PD and college needs. That two years has proved very successful. So we've revamped this working with the college. Kerry Gaswick had a lot of input under this, Austin Stevens had a lot of input into this, Security Director Mark Hunt had a lot of input into this, I had input into this. And we came up with an agreement that works for both, where we're gonna provide them services. They'll still reimburse us for hours at special events. So if they have a concert venue that comes in and they need manpower, they will pay that overtime rate to us. I think the first year's five thousand and it trickles up in year two and year three. Also, the other benefit the city gets out of it is we can use their facilities and there's no charge, which is huge to us when we throw conferences or trainings together. We have a place to go that's got the technology to serve law enforcement from our, our region to come in. So it's a good deal for us and it works well for the college. We've had a great working relationship with the college for years and years and that's gonna continue, whether this interlocal agreement's in effect or not. They're within our city, they're like family to us, so I'm in support of this.
Anybody have any questions for Rick, for Chief? If not, we're good. We have roll call, please?
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item D. Someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, which is to approve the plans specification for the construction of a sixty by eighty by fourteen foot, sixty feet by eighty feet by fourteen foot post frame building for the street department and authorize notice to bidders. Devin, you wanna?
Good evening, Council, Dustin Glass, Street Superintendent, ten thirteen East Niagara. What questions do you have?
Well, in, in reality, in reading it over and talking to Shane here and Adam, I, I think there's some changes that need to be made in it and, you know, we can talk about those now or we could entertain maybe emotions to table it and then, you know, I, I have, have had Shane do a lot of projects for me and he's really knowledgeable in the construction trade and I think his input would be invaluable in a couple of these things.
Well, I, I just, as a capital project that actually was budgeted, I just, I would, I haven't had time to look over the specs and all that. And I'm not against it, I'm just, just want, just a little bit more time to, to look over it. So maybe I make a move to motion it until, or table it till next meeting.
I'll second that.
We had a motion by Shane to table it and who made the second?
I did.
Clay, Clay, seconded by Clay. Is there any discussion on the tabling? Are we?
I think you're fine.
Fine, okay.
It just pushes it to, it pushes it to the next meeting.
Yeah, we're tabling it to the next meeting, not indefinitely. Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item D.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six and move for its approval.
Second that.
I think I said D and it was E. Okay. Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane for resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six to recommend award of bid for the city of Shatteran Anne Street Water Main Replacement Project. You wanna tell us all about it?
Tori Zuber, I'm the Utility Superintendent, fifteen ninety South Maple. What do you wanna know, I guess, as far as? Basically, we, we had this budgeted for this year. Two blocks of water main, eight inch, to be replaced on Anne Street. Two hundred and three hundred block. The line that's getting replaced is steel, old steel, thin walled steel. We're looking at, we went out to bid, we had five, four bidders. I think everybody has those numbers unless you want me to read them off.
Well, it's good for the.
I can do that.
The TV audience.
I can do that.
Uh, Mark Dykes, it's good for his, he, he has them there and he'll pick them up, but.
Okay, so we had Hennings Construction, they came in at two hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, sixty-five cents. Binner Construction came in at four hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, twenty-five cents. Forward Construction, four thousand, or four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. K L Wood was four, four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars even. The engineer's estimate was three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, fifty cents. After the, the bids, MC Shaft suggested taking Hennings. They've done some work in the past, we have not worked with them lately, but they have done in the past. They feel that they're qualified to do the work. So I guess that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, re- reading the, the letter from MC Shaft, signed by Michael Olson, he, he did point out the major difference was the price of the eight inch water mains. So apparently the Hennings Construction has a good source of supply that they can get that done and save us some money and.
Yep.
Be good to get that going. Do you recall what the time period is?
I just, I just know this summer.
Yeah, is there a end date on that contract?
No. There is no end date on the contract as far as specifications like we did for the restrooms or anything else. It's just depending on when the contractor can, we can get the paperwork back to them and then when they can start.
And with being out of town, I imagine they'll get, try to get it done quickly because they don't wanna pay too much room and board for our travel. Okay, anyone have any questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, who wants to be the hero to the swimmers?
I'll move to approve Free Swim Day on June twentieth at the Shatteran Area Aquatics and Wellness Center.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Clay for motion to approve Free Swim Day on June twentieth, twenty twenty-five at the Shatteran Area Aquatics and Wellness Center. Anyone have any questions about visibility to do this, or reasoning behind it? I think, I think it's probably to get a few more people, maybe that haven't used it on a regular basis to come out and try it and maybe they'll end up getting a, buying a pass for whatever time period that they desire, so.
I hope the general public takes advantage.
Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item G.
I'll make a motion to approve applications for the sidewalk improvement plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Shane to approve the sidewalk grant request, which totaled up to twelve thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents and there are seven, eight, nine?
Nine.
Nine people who
We have eight in our list.
What's that?
We have eight in our.
Eight.
No, you should have nine. One, two, three, four, oh, no, it's eight, excuse me.
Okay, eight. And, and this information I got on Friday, it was only five.
Yep, we got a few more.
A few more came in, slipped them under the door on Friday. Locked the door, made us come to the door.
And there was, uh, what, thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand is what we had allocated for possible spending. Now that we know what we got, we can start working with Dustin and Janet to figure out what other areas we're gonna try to work on.
Dustin's should be happy, got a little more money to play with.
Yep, get a few things.
Shouldn't say play with, get stuff done.
Get some other things done that need to be done, yep.
Well, I'm encouraged by the fact, I was kind of disappointed when we got the initial thing and that was only five of them, but good to see the addition of the other three and look forward to getting it done. And for information, those only totaled up to twelve thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, so. So any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item number H on the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chief Rick Hickstein to the Problem Resolution Team.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Kevin to appoint Chief Rick Hickstein to the Problem Resolution Team. Any discussion?
That, that second was made by Clay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, it was made by Clay.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item number I.
I'll, I'll make a, I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven, which is to approve payment application number one to full construction for the construction of the ADA restrooms for the downtown plaza. Just for the public's information, this is in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, which covers the cost of the insurance or bond and slash bond for the project less of five percent retainage. So, no, no work has started yet. Anyone have any questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, item number J. Each year in conjunction with the, preparing the budget, the council has a budget workshop, which has always been held in the afternoon. That could be varied, but it was suggested that the week of June the twenty-third and that has the information that we have in our packet that most of the city employees. that, uh, most of the city employees present at the, um, indicated that Monday, June twenty-third would work for them. Would that, how does that fit with council members on a Monday?
And it, and that's usually in the afternoon, you said?
That's normally when it's been.
Yeah.
Yep.
Was it three o'clock?
Three o'clock is what your, what time we started last year and I believe the year before. And we could start earlier if you guys would like to, but it just takes a long day if you're started much later than that sometimes, so. Looking out for what the staff has to do.
Probably two hour meeting.
Two hours, what I'd like to minimize or keep it to if, if at all possible. But obviously we'll do what we have to and either schedule another time period or, or whatever. But, uh, yeah, two hours seems to be a good focal point for it.
Yeah, that should work for me just fine.
Yep, works for me.
Okay.
That should be okay.
Work for you, man?
Well, that's when we'll meet. I don't think we need any formal motion on that thing.
At three or what time?
Pardon?
At what time?
Three o'clock. June twenty-third, three o'clock PM. Okay, I'd like to introduce a motion to, or make a motion to approve the claims that we have uh, in our information.
I'll second.
Who's that?
Kevin.
Kevin. I made the motion, seconding, Kevin seconded it to approve the claims as presented. Um, the first one, AMGL related to our audit and that we did make a prior payment. So the total cost of the audit was thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, um, which is substantially more than I ever got paid. And I did notice one unusual thing and I'm gonna need chief's help. We paid to have after-hours towing for instead of bike. Chief, could you, uh, tell me what that is? I always like to have something to talk about.
Mayor Council, Rick Hickstein, one twenty-five Main Street again. Um, that particular bill is a tow bill for a little mini bike that one of my officers went to pull over. It went into Wilson Park and crashed and they arrested the gentleman for license revocation issue and all of it, a series of other things. And so we had this little mini bike that it is motorized that we had to get rid of. They don't fit in my cars right now. So they called a tow truck to come and take it and that's what that bill's for. And the owner has not picked it up from the impound yet. I need to get that business paid and then we'll go and process it as an abandoned vehicle or charge him for the tow along with the storage at our impound lot.
Oh, good. I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause it struck me as kinda unusual and I. So anybody have any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, we do not, do not need a resolution to excuse a council member. Um, at this time, we have a public comment period. So if anyone wishes to address the council and a matter not on this agenda, they may do so and individuals are allowed to, three minutes to speak. See anyone coming? Um, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick things to just remind the public. Um, the mosquitoes, um, if they could help us to try to eliminate any standing water in their yards or anything else like that, that'll help out with a lot of this mosquito issues that we potentially could have with the blessing of the rain. Um, other than that, uh, we've talked about the weeds and, and any kinda trash or anything else. If they got questions or concerns, they just need to contact down here at City Hall and we'll help them out to let them know what we've got going on. And that's all I have for tonight, George.
Okay. Council closing comments or start with Clay?
Uh, first off, I'd like to thank all the veteran organizations for putting on, uh, their annual programs at the cemeteries. They did a great job. The American Legion, the Auxiliary, Honor Guard, the BFW. Uh, and thank you to all the volunteers that helped put flags out in the cemeteries. It looked really nice. And then one more thing is June, uh, along with all many of the other things that June has recognized, June is also Men's Mental Health Awareness Month. Uh, men are four times more likely to die from suicide, two to three times more likely to misuse drugs and have higher alcohol-related death rates than women. Uh, they don't seek treatment nearly as often as women do, um, mainly due to the stigma uh, that there is of men getting, seeking help. Uh, and like I mentioned last month, if you're needing any kinda help, there's the nine eight eight number. There's, you can call me if you need to, uh, and I'll give you five, six minutes. I might not have the best answers, but I'll listen. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Clay. It was nice of you to mention the, the Memorial Day. Um, I did go to the one at the Calvary Cemetery and it was really nice. And even though it was a little damp out, but it was fine. Um, I'd like to just reiterate what I mentioned last time. Actually, this year I mo- noticed more weeds growing in the, the Highway twenty sidewalks that was poured than I have for the last few years. So we really need to get out there with either the spray or the weed eater or the shovel or, um, you, you won't have any luck. I don't think pulling them by hand unless you get a heavy rain and you go out there immediately, you can, you can pull some of them, so. Um, I'm gonna be spending some time calling people, sending texts and what have you to try to get, rectify this and I know the police department will help me a little bit, so. But we need to get the town looking nice for visitors or instead of them coming into town. And I don't know, when I drive, I see this stuff. Now maybe, um, my wife mentions this to her people, her lady friends and someone said, I didn't notice any weeds, so. I don't know, but that's my project for June.
Um, all I really have to say tonight is, uh, uh, same as George reemphasized what he had to say, uh, clean up, especially your alleys, swan, so our swan trucks can get, um, in and out easy. Um, and it doesn't take too long to, uh, to mow your lawn if, if you got time and, and earned or abled, um.
Well, I'm gonna utilize this time to earn some brownie points and, uh, wish my beautiful, accomplished wife a happy thirtieth anniversary.
Uh, I don't, I don't have a lot tonight. Um, just wanted to mention, I went this weekend and, uh, saw Guys and Dolls at Post Playhouse. Uh, that is always a highlight of my summer, um, when Post Playhouse is in session. Um, and it was a great production. Um, I, I hope lots and lots of people take advantage of having that in our, our area. It really is, uh, a gem for Northwest Nebraska. Um, and a great, great bunch of actors, great production, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I make motion, we adjourn?
Second it.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane to adjourn. Can we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.